Okay, board members, I went to Brunswick County Schools. I've got 6:30. You all have 6:30, I'm gonna call the meeting order. Welcome, July, July the 12th. Board of Education meeting, board members. With that, I'm gonna ask board member Kathryn Cook to lead us into invocation.
Well, we thank you for this day and this time, and we thank you for the ability of you here to make decisions that need to be made for this community, for our children and the staff, and we just thank you, Bill, for the time of prosperity for our community during the summer and vacation months. We just pray that you continue to keep everyone safe as they travel the roads in our area, and we ask you to just give us wisdom and God, God is tonight, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing, and I'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. No public address? Presentations? Music Student Assistance Program, Richard Sliess. Mr. Sliess?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Last time I was here, this place was packed wall to wall and hanging off the ceiling was a lot of angry people. I hasten to tell you, I'm not angry. I'm here on behalf of the Brunswick Concert Band. I think it's safe to say almost every teacher in the system wears many hats outside the classroom, including me. The hat I wear tonight is that of the Brunswick Bands, which is comprised of two main groups, the Brunswick Concert Band and the Brunswick Big Band. I have played in a concert band as well as emceed concerts for about thirteen years, and I currently serve on the Board of Directors of that organization. We rehearse at the Duke Energy Media Center on River Road in Southport, but our members live in all parts of the county, as well as the North Myrtle Beach area and Wilmington area. Our demographics includes college professors, law enforcement people, engineers, professional musicians, IT workers, a physician, a dentist, nurses, self-employed people, and a growing number of students. Our members firmly agree with the research regarding the positive influence music students receive from involvement with music programs in the schools. Music education enhances creative thinking and problem solving, builds collaboration and communication skills, and develops discipline and persistence. In line with our commitment to community outreach, we have, from time to time, provided financial assistance to students who are attending summer music study programs and are recommended by their instructor. These grants have run from $500 to $1,500. But we felt we could do more, and we were exploring some options when about eight years ago, we were approached by Ben Edwards, the band director at South Brunswick Middle School. He told us he had a young person who desperately wanted to learn to play a clarinet, but the child's family situation was such that there was no way they could afford to rent an instrument. All of the school's instruments were assigned to other students, and Ben wondered if there was anything the concert band could do. As it happened, we did have a few instruments in our inventory that were not being used, and so we cleaned up a clarinet, one of our members purchased some basic books for the student to use, and a woodwind player provided some lessons to get the students started before school opened that fall. It was that experience where the seed was planted, from which the Brunswick Concert Band's Music Student Assistance Program began. We solicited used instruments at gun condition at our concerts, and the results have been amazing. We currently have about eighty instruments, clarinets, trumpets, trombones, saxophones, flutes, and two piccolos, available that we have received, and we have received two grants to cover the cost of repairs as this program goes on. The way the program works is this: A band director contacts the Brunswick Concert Band with his or her needs. The requirements are few. The school's inventory for a particular instrument must be exhausted, and the recipient must come from a family that cannot afford to rent or buy an instrument. The student may keep the instrument as long as he or she is actively involved in the school's music program, and it will go with the student from middle school to high school. We will provide some one-on-one instruction if needed to get the new player started. There is no cost to the student, the school, or the district. From one simple request to help a student who wanted to play a clarinet, the Brunswick Band has grown the MSAP program to where we are now in South High, North High, South Middle, Cedar Grove, and Leland Middle Schools. During the school year just ended, in June, we had seventy instruments in those schools, and we are currently talking to Shalot to see what we can do to help there. It is our goal to get into every school in the county providing musical help to them. The truly fun part of this program is many of our MSAP students will join the Brunswick Band for our winter and spring concerts. We had about twenty students with us in April, students from seventh grade through twelfth. Not only does this drop the average age of the band, because our oldest player is eighty-three, but it gives the students the experience of playing next to an accomplished musician, a learning experience that will stay with the students throughout their lives. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sliess.
Thank you, absolutely.
Is Dr. Conrad, the eighty-three-year-old?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Does he play a clarinet?
Yes, sir. Has for many years.
Any questions, board members? Mr. Tubbs, any comments?
I just think it's so amazing that we have the members of our community who are like Mr. Sliess, who continue to play but want to make certain that we give the opportunity to our young folks to have that opportunity to participate in a band. I grew up in a band from seventh through a couple of years in college, and know the worth of it, and...
It's a win-win situation, the schools get kids playing, the other guys play, and the kids get to play.
We appreciate it too much.
Terrific.
I didn't realize you were doing that much. Thank you for coming and giving us this report on that.
Thank you.
How many requests did you say you usually receive a year?
We had seven. I think the actual number was seven, two instruments in school.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
When we sat here and added that up, I just went, "Whoa." Because I started the program. When we started the program, we had six instruments in the band.
I think I've got something by him. Yeah, I'll get it to you.
We're in South Middle, we start up in August.
I'll take it off.
We're a five-by-one, C-3, four organization, so you can...
Thank you, Mr. Sliess. Very good.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Tubbs, you wanna mention about the Lincoln Primary Garden Project?
Yes, sir. Last Wednesday, you and I, and Ms. Babson, and Mr. Thompson had the privilege of meeting Molly White and her group of fantastic teachers, of which Shane Tarkinson was the gentleman who came up with the idea of having a garden, or gardens, raised gardens within the, on the campus at Lincoln Elementary. And on Wednesday, it was the kickoff, the groundbreaking, and cooperative extension's part of it, a group of members in the community to include some of the people from, like, the Rotary Clubs.
Kiwanis.
The Kiwanis were there, and other individuals had donated money as well as time. And the Kiwanis is actually building the outdoor classroom for this garden, and it's gonna be a raised garden, and cooperative extensions already have the seeds germinating to put in as soon as the time's right. And it will be an outdoor classroom, looking at STEM, and the first part of the STEM is the last letter, is math. They're gonna use math with the students in looking at the dimensions of the garden and the depth, and how much the volume of the soil within the garden, and then they will move on to the other parts of STEM. And they hope to have a fall garden and a spring garden, and they will have it available for the students and to take home. And I think it's just really something that took off with one teacher who had an idea, and when he brought it up to his faculty, the faculty bought into it, and I look for a lot of really, really fun, neat, enjoyable educational activities to take place in that area of Lincoln.
Ms. Babson, Mr. Thompson, any comments?
Just briefly. Get the switch down here. Shane made it very clear that he views as an opportunity to use the gardening experience as a way of integrating subjects into kind of meaning for the students.
Mathematics.
Mathematics and science, there's chemistry, there's soil chemistry, you know, there's all sorts of things going on, and there's probably even a little construction management in putting all of this together. But I was just wondering about the learned experience of the teacher, if succeeds, as Shane believes it will, and the students benefit from it, and actually show the, I guess, impact of that approach, that's something that I think we could share across the boundaries, you know, with other elementary schools, and it might be interesting to do a little bit of, I guess, monitoring to see how that's going. I'm not sure how we would do that, but I'm very interested in how successful he is in integrating the classroom experience with the gardening.
And you know, we had the cooperative extension over last month or month before, talking about some of the same experiences, but, so it's growing in our school communities. And it's, you know, we used to be an agrarian county, and no longer, we're an urban now, so a lot of our students do not get the opportunity to see or participate and see the rewards for that participation. And I just think it's really, really gonna be not only an interesting time for students, but it's part of what we're trying to do in the educational pieces, in the collaborative learning, and bringing...
The hands-on experience.
The hands-on experiences to it, and bringing, you know, making it relevant, and...
Well, I'm thinking, we have programs at Southport, for example, and a Bleach Supply, and a Nobelville in Bolivia.
And Bolivia.
There's a number of programs, and it seems like the initiative has a lot of energy with our teachers, and it'll be interesting to kind of keep an eye on how that evolves and develops, because they might could even write, what is it? Can't remember what we talk about, but I think guiding principles that is shared with other school districts that we put together.
Yes, sir.
What do you call those? There's a word for them.
Dr. Meadows is busy on something else, too, but it's, they are...
I know we have shared, we have shared a structural description of how you go about teaching some things with other school systems, and I just wonder if this has enough momentum to really begin to be something that we can share with other school systems with our success. Of course, we have extended growing seasons here, so we probably can be outside a little more than other school systems might be able to.
I'd like to mention one more thing. Bud and I were invited to go into the gym, and the mayor of Northwest was there with a friend of his, and they were spending the summer teaching kids values and manners by, in the gym, by basketball games and that type of thing. They had as many as sixty students at the time there, and I just, that was, and these were some of the same students that were taking, I think, taking part in the summer reading program. And I, when I go into the schools, I just see so many of these wonderful things happening, and so many times it's volunteers that's coming in from outside in the community, just like we're talking about tonight. So I think we're very blessed to have this type of thing, and the innovative programs that teachers and schools are thinking of. If we, if everybody took time to go visit the schools sometime, you would find out a lot of good things happening.
Mayor Knox, Mayor Knox had been talking about this. This is the second or third year of doing this.
And the North Brunswick Kiwanises were there for the garden. Lot of participation in terms of community.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a short video that I would like to...
Play it.
Play it, of course.
Biggest part of this project is that I've seen a lot of kids be disengaged in school, and that's something that I'm trying to bring back, is that enjoyment and the being engaged in the classroom and out here in the outdoor classroom, and really loving learning and hoping that that will continue throughout their life.
What I love about Lincoln is the sense of community, and this is just a way to expand that, a way for the kids to use an outdoor classroom and then bring what they know home and share it with their families and then with the community.
We are really looking forward to our students having hands-on experiences with math and science, and being able to learn about the economics of a garden, and take this as far as the community will let us.
Just the fun of it, you know, the fun of digging in the dirt and getting dirty and, you know, letting the kids have fun while they learn is just priceless.
Very good. Well put together, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis was there recording that. Anything else about the garden? Any other presentations? If not, we'll move on to the meeting agenda. Board members, you received your agenda. Do we have any changes to that? We need to move from discussion to action to superintendent evaluation. Do we have a motion to move the superintendent evaluation to, under action items?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. Move the superintendent evaluation to action. Any other changes in the agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with a change?
So moved.
Second, okay. Mr. Thompson, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We had the minutes from June 7th, 14th, 27th, 27th, and 27th, our committee meetings. You all, I'm sure, read them thoroughly, and if there's no changes, do we have a motion to set the approval of the minutes for those five dates, or for those five board meetings?
Actually, there's six.
With the retreat, it was two days.
Fourteenth and fifteenth.
I stand corrected. There's six times.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, board retreat, and the committee meetings.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, and I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Babson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consent items? We had a couple of consent items that we discussed thoroughly in the committee meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those two consent items? The MOAs?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Under action items, we moved the superintendent evaluation up to action. Earlier today, we met in closed session, and we completed an evaluation to superintendent. I'm gonna ask Superintendent Tubbs if he has any statement or comments he'd like to make.
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to spend this last year, year and a half as the superintendent of my favorite school system and yours, too. My comments go basically to the fact that the evaluation of the superintendent is an extension of the school district's planning process. It's what our board would like to see us do. It is the method for clarifying the expectations of the board, and it also assists the superintendent and his cabinet towards personal and professional growth, and helps us to identify those goals. Additionally, one of the most important things that the evaluation does, in my opinion, is it fosters trust and communication between the superintendent and the board and the cabinet that works for the superintendent. I mean, that has, that has been a very, very fun thing to watch happen this past year as we grew together and as we learn from you and you learn from us. Just as importantly, the evaluation cites strengths and identifies areas of improvement for the superintendent's cabinet and for what we need to be doing in Brunswick County schools. The Board of Education has been very, very supportive of me and my staff this past year since I came on board, and as we've addressed the issues, the concerns, the finances, and the test scores, they've been behind us and worked with us and helped guide us as we've moved through the processes. The board's evaluation of me is in the above-average category, and I honestly believe it will lead to a discussion of goals, and a discussion of improvements, and how we become the, moving from great to the best school system in not only our region but in our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tubbs. Board members, any comments on Mr. Tubbs' statement, if you don't mind Mr. Tubbs making comments?
I have no objection to anything, Mr.
Chairman, I, I think it's the best evaluation I've been part of. When Mr. Tubbs came in, and we had nine different areas in which we evaluated him, and he began telling us what his score was, and just about every time he says something, it's the same score that the whole board had come up with. And then the total score was the same, about the same score, too. So I just want to say, and I'm sure the other board members can relate to this, too, it's just been such a good experience to have him here. The board is working together, and I believe we're accomplishing much, much more, because we're not concentrating on personalities, we're concentrating on the job that we're supposed to have done. He respects our opinions, and we respect his opinions, and, you know, Bud and I will be leaving the board in December, but I believe we're leaving it in good hands, as far as the board goes, and especially as far as the superintendent goes, and so, thank you, Mr. Tubbs.
Thank you.
Comments?
Chair, I'd just say that...
Mr. Thompson?
I'm sorry?
Just go ahead.
Superintendent Tubbs, I'm not so sure that we've done you any great favors, because the next year or two is going to require tremendous effort, and I think our evaluation view clearly states that we believe you can rise to the required level of success with the undertakings, you know, the bond referendum coming up, and it's gonna be a lot of hard work, so, welcome to non-retirement.
Well, this is my school system, too, and my kids.
And you are the number-one advocate for public schools here in Brunswick County. The number one, and the board is following close behind that. Ms. Cook, do you have some comments?
I'd just like to say it's been a very refreshing year with Colonel Tubbs leading us, and I look forward to him steering our ship straight ahead. It's been, it's been, it's been a good ride so far.
Mr. Miller?
Let's see, where do I begin, Les? You know, he was my assistant principal, my brother's sister principal, so you're getting right on up there in age, you know? But, you know, we did take you out of retirement, and this has been the easiest year and a half for me in my tenure, which is ten years now on this board, and I appreciate the leadership that you've provided, and the friendship and the transparency that you provide to this board. Goes a long ways, and I appreciate it.
We're in it together. It's our school system, our kids, and it's been a pleasure working with each of you. And Mr. Thompson, Ms. Babson, when you do move off the board, I will miss you very dearly. You continue to give us good input, and I know that you will continue to do that in your retirement also, but thank you very much. I look forward to the next few years working with all of you.
The contract, board members, will remain the same as far as salary, but we did discuss extending the contract, to have a motion to extend the contract.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we extend Colonel Tubbs' contract by two years.
Have a motion by Mr. Miller to extend the current, the current contract as is to extend it for two years, to have a second.
A second.
Second by Ms. Babson, discussion about that. Mr. Tubbs, you willing to have a contract extended for two additional years?
Have fun. It's gonna be hard, Zach. The next year, advanced ed, the bond, we pass the bond, and then we start building new schools and continuing to revise the strategic plan that we have in place for our young people. It's, it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be hard work, but, you know, as my dad said, hard work sometimes can be fun if you, it's how you look at it.
Mr. Tubbs, under your leadership and the leadership of the cabinet and the professional staff we have in our schools, I feel like it will be done. We'll have a lot of accomplishments over the next two or three years, and I definitely have utmost confidence in you and your cabinet, and I'll sit back and watch it happen on the sideline, okay? We have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent contract for an additional two years, with the contract remaining the same, other than that. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to discussion and announcements by the superintendent and board members. The nineteenth, we have committee meetings. Our board member, Mr. John T., will not be in attendance, so does that mean still that we will have the operations at 8:30?
I think it's probably concluded at 8:45.
I was gonna say nine.
We will have the timer out for you this time.
Mr. Miller even said he might attend that meeting. So do we want to have the meeting start at 8:30? Yes, operations at 8:30, Jill?
That's where you usually start it, isn't it?
I'd like to see you have it at 7:30, frankly.
7:30, Jill? Okay, we'll start the operations at 8:30, and then we'll have finance, HR, or curriculum. Do you know, Jill?
Finance typically.
Finance. So we should be through by twelve, hopefully before twelve. Okay. Mr. Thompson, I hope you enjoy your visit out west in California. You'll be missed by somebody, I'm not sure who, but you'll be missed.
Say hi to those two young folks that I knew when they were growing up for me. I mean, they're, they're...
Two kids from LA living in LA.
Yep.
Day treatment facility, where do we stand on that, Dr. Meadows, or Mr. Tubbs, or?
I am handing you, passing out a document. I'll give you folks one, too. This is from Ms. Quinlan, as to where we stand. The school system side of the day treatment plan is writ. We're ready to occupy the building, we've got the teachers identified, and we're ready to start day one. Right now, Alexander Youth Network, who will be helping us with the mental health part, they have to present to the Division of Health Services Regulations to present their policies and procedures. It's just a matter of them explaining what they have in the way of their handouts and their book, and their procedures to the state, so that the state will then approve them to come in and work with us as the mental health provider. And as you can see, looking through it, that Dr. Young from Alexander Youth will be taking the lead in reviewing files as we look at students and choose the students that need to be placed at the day treatment facility. Additionally, Alexander Youth will be working with all of the staff in a training environment so that we understand how we will work together, both the teachers and the mental health facilities. So we look forward to opening it. There's eight students initially that we will start with, and then if the program continues to grow, we think it will, we'll just see where it goes. We have an opportunity in the space to have more students, it's just making certain we know what we're doing correctly first. But I think this is a real needed opportunity for us to help in the mental health arena.
I agree. Long time coming. Dr. Meadows, you have any comments about it?
Excited to get started.
This is something that we have needed, and we're starting small, but those eight will benefit quite a bit.
Chairman, could I ask a quick question? Chairman, could I ask a quick question? The interview process that they're talking about for, I guess, mental health staffing, is that for the classroom teacher?
We have our teachers identified, and they're looking at their staffing, Alexander Youth.
We can be assured that the Alexander Youth staffing is going to be exceptionally well-qualified and experienced.
Within our agreement, within our agreement, there are requirements for those staff members in terms of licensure and qualifications and all of that.
Well, I just bring it up because it sounds like we're hiring a bunch of new people to come in in something as important as this, but really, it's pulling from candidates that are, it's a highly skilled group of individuals.
Right.
And I just wanted to sort of make that point because it did seem like you're opening up a day treatment center and you're taking job applications.
Yeah, well, and we are to an extent, but they are, they have to meet those qualifications of those positions of the clinical counselor.
I think it's worthwhile to just restate that.
Yeah, but we have already hired the regular ed teacher and the exceptional children's teacher on our side.
Dr. Meadows, is there, in this program, is there anything designed to work with the parents of these children?
The parents actually have to approve or agree for their child to participate in the program, and that they also have to participate, are expected to participate in some counseling sessions as a family as a part of it as well.
I think that'd be great.
No, it's not really to do with the day treatment program, but we did some training with Alexander Youth Network on just how, you know, where children kind of come from the experiences they have, how that impacts their development, and how that might impact the behaviors that may come out with students. And we did that with principals, assistant principals, some support staff, and we actually are going to contract with Alexander Youth Network to do some training with some of our staff members in our structured behavior classes at BCA, some other locations to try to help teachers better understand where children, the experiences that children have, how that impacts their mental health and their, the way that they interact within the classroom. So we look forward to what that will do for our teachers.
You know, board members, July is normally a quiet month for a school district, but we have been asked to do a bond presentation next month, next week. So with the bond soon to kick off, it'll be here before you know it, August, September, October, and then voting on November the eighth. And that's going to be a challenge for us, five board members, along with the superintendent and cabinet, to get out and promote it and let the county or the community know what our needs are. And I look forward to heading it up, same as other four board members and the superintendent.
That meeting with North Brunswick, is that, is that the nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Seven o'clock?
I'm not quite sure the time, but we'll find out. And we've gotten some emails as board members, and you may have seen, from some other communities in and about the county who wants to help us out with the bond referendum. So, and I want to just thank the Star News, they had an excellent article in Sunday's paper about the bond referendum. It was very well printed and promoted it, and I want to thank the cabinet, those who gave them that information for helping out. It was a very well-written article, so. Anything else, board members, any other discussion? It is about seven o'clock, seven oh one, and we want to go into closed session and stay about five to eight minutes. Is that correct? Can we do that? No, okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
By Ms. Cook, have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go into closed sessions and wrap it up.